Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is six o'clock. New start time for board meeting was seven. Now we're back to where we're at six. A little bit of change. And welcome to the Ritter Board of Education Business Meeting of November. I will declare that we have a quorum. And look for a motion to excuse.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Ms. Enriquez Pembla. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Call a vote. Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Dr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Lomas?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Glover Jones?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Next thing up is the adoption of the agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second?
We have a motion and a second for the adoption of the agenda. Call a vote. Ms. Glover Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Garden?
Yes.
Ms. Lomas?
Yes.
Dr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. We have an agenda. Next thing up is we have the Pledge of Allegiance. And do we have some students from Marvin that can help us with this?
We do.
Awesome!
Hi, everybody. Thanks for coming. We'll wait for the other board members. What's your name? What is it? What's your name? I promise. I'm Miss Ivy. What's your name?
Diego.
Hi, Diego. How are you? What's your name? What is it?
Rain.
Hi, Rain. Okay, you can start us whenever you're ready.
(Singing) Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job. Thank you.
Good job!
Dr. Thomas gives a certificate for...
Assistant, you were here and helped us out at the board meeting. I really appreciate you being here today. We couldn't have done this without you. You know that, right?
Star of the show.
There we go. And before we get going, the board member that's not here tonight, Ms. Vanessa, she wanted me to tell you guys that she thinks you guys are the most awesomeest school that we have.
Thank you.
I wanted to let you know that. The next thing, before we get to the school of the month, or we'll get to the school of the month now and then I'll report on some stuff. So go ahead. Give us your best.
We are here from Marvin Elementary. My name is Dr. Melissa Crowley. I am the principal, first-year principal here at Marvin. We are joined by... Oh, thank you. We are joined by Jen Milges, our assistant principal, Amanda Gaston, who is our interventionist, and Amy Farnum, one of our first-grade teachers, and a whole collection of kids that we're going to introduce you to in just a moment. When looking at our equity statement, the thing we really wanted to focus on tonight was that students' backgrounds do not limit the expectations on student outcomes. We're going to present to you guys tonight on UFLY, which is a reading phonics program we are piloting through all K through two classrooms in our building. And it does not matter where a kid comes from, what they look like, what they believe. We believe every kid has the right and opportunity to learn to read at high levels, and this program is something we are doing in our building to try and get to that. All right. So as you know, reading affects everything. It's in everything. It's a code. And we want all students to master this code. And we believe UFLY is something that will help us do that. It is an explicit, systematic, and intensive phonics program. It has a multi-sensory approach to it. It has progress monitoring and evidence-based strategies within it. And it also correlates with Missouri learning standards and our proficiency skills. It includes these components. Every day, they work on phonemic awareness, visual drill, auditory drill, blending drill, hard words or irregular words, and connected texts, reading connected texts. These are some pictures of our students and Amy implemented in her classroom.
So I get the honor and privilege of introducing some of my students from my class this year and a student from last year. Here we have Rain. She is a second-grade student this year. I got to have her in my class last year. She is amazing. In my class this year, I have Diego, Ivy, Promise. And I get a bonus student. Zaya isn't in my class, but first-grade teachers, we all work together. And it's Promise's sister, so she gets to join us and show us what she knows as well. I would also just like to take a moment to thank the parents. I really appreciate you guys being here and being a part of this. It's so great that we get to have our students here to show what they're learning in the classroom. They have been hard at work all year, building their skills and confidence in their reading abilities through UFLY lessons. Each lesson follows a predictable, evidence-based routine that helps students feel confident and successful. UFLY encourages active engagement, and I have witnessed that students love the predictable routines and interactive elements. They know the routines so well that they could do them without me. And often will. So Rain is going to play the part of Ms. Farnum right now. So she is going to run through two of the components. She's going to run through the visual drill, which would normally have slides up for the students to see. She has flashcards for them. And then she's going to run through the auditory drill. So I'm going to have you step on over here, and I'll hold the microphone for you.
All right. You guys ready? Ivy, say it again. We have more than enough. Okay? We're going to do the visual, yeah? You know the drill. A spells F.
F spells S. O spells O. I spells I. T spells D. N spells N. W spells W. X spells X. T spells T. P spells P. L spells L. A spells A. H spells H. E spells E. U spells U. N spells N. V spells V. Z spells Z. S spells S. B spells B. S A spells S. C K spells K. T A spells T.
Now we're going to do the auditory drill. I make the sound and you tell me how it's spelled.
F. O. I. D. M. X. X. T. P. L. A. H. A. U. N. V. Z. S. B. S H. C K. T H.
Good job. Good job. Good job. This here is a graph of Amy's class last year when she... her first year of UFLY. This shows the beginning of the year and end of the year data. The first one is, as you can see, it has... our red has decreased and our green has increased. Her class had 19 students last year. Two of the students were already identified with a reading disability. Five of the students were English language learners, and one of the students was in one of my tier-three groups. This graph, I love this graph because it shows our growth. So the red is students that may have only made less than a year's growth. The green is they made an entire year's growth. And the blue is they made more than one year's growth.
Ms. Gaston, can you talk about the importance of more than a year's worth of growth?
Absolutely. Because most of our students come in behind grade level, and so we're really trying to boost them to get on top of... be on grade levels, that they're independent readers. And by second grade and higher, they're comprehending what they read.
Thank you.
And that's all we have. I just want to point out that we have lots of artwork up, but everything on this side is from Ms. Farnum's class. The writing, that you can see them applying those letter sounds in their writing right there as well. So it's not just for their reading. It's also helping to grow their writing skills. Thank you. Do you have any questions for us?
Dr. Crowley, can you talk about the importance of phonemic awareness?
Oh, I can try, right? Because no, I'm not that person. So phonemic awareness is the idea of like, do I know those letter sounds? Can I hear them? Can I... It's an auditory thing, right? So phonemic awareness is can I hear it? Can I do it out loud? It's really important to have that first in addition to having the sight recognition of the letters. They're two different skills. That if we only focus on the sound on paper, we won't always listen to the sound out loud. And so that connection between reading, like putting together the letters on the page and reading it out loud and hearing the sound, it's not going to connect for kids unless we explicitly teach it, which UFLY is doing for us.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I'd just like to point out... I'd like to point out that we have a Grow Your Own program that starts in high school, and I think could also start in...
Rain, what grade are you in? Second. Second grade.
Maybe we start our Grow Your Own program.
Rain had a big day today. Our second graders performed at our Veterans Day Assembly today, so she's really been the star of our day in her second-grade team.
That was awesome.
Keep in thought, maybe a career in teaching?
Got it? Sound good?
Looks like you have a natural talent for it.
Thank you so much. We appreciate the time.
Well, that was exciting. I know they thanked you all, families, for being here, but the board also would like to have you stand up so we can recognize you and thank you as well, all the families that are here. You're just as important to those kids and their education as any teacher can be. And because you're mom and dad, so thank you so much for being here and taking the time out.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And I think Vanessa might be right. They're the best elementary school we got. The next thing on our agenda is a report of closed session. And the Board of Education met in closed session October 9th, 2025, and November 6th of 2025 for a discussion of personnel agenda items. The next thing on our agenda is public comments. We don't have any. Well, then, at this point, I'll let everybody know that Betty is filling in here for Dequinda because Dequinda's at a family event at their college, University of... So family first. She's where she should be. Betty has been gracious to fill in. Next thing up is our reports. And the president's report is such. The Missouri School Board Association presentation. Our group had a very nice presentation on cultural shifts in a competency-based education system. And it's very easy to say that we were and are proud and honored to represent our community at the 2025 Missouri School Boards Association Conference on October 25, where we presented, we... kind of the royal, we did present. Jennifer, Lisa, and Rook did. Oh, and Chris. Sorry. Cultural shifts in a competency-based education system. The presentation highlighted how Ritter is transforming teaching and learning through mastery-based practices that focus on equity, student ownership, and personalized learning. Our team showcased how CBE empowers students to take charge of their learning and demonstrate mastery of key skills and concepts. The session was met with enthusiasm from educators and board members across Missouri. We are incredibly proud of our teachers, principals, and district leaders for their commitment to redefining learning for all students. Thank you to everyone who contributed to this presentation and to all who continue to make Ritter a model of excellence, equity, and innovation in education. Special thanks go out to Dr. Kilbright, Dr. Stewart, Dr. Gillian, Dr. Nobiel, as well as board member Jennifer Lomas and board member Lisa Glover Jones for their outstanding presentation. Thank you for everything you did to tell our story and to share this important information with leaders across our state. So thank you all very much for what you've done. Next thing, candidate filing information for the Board of Education. Ritter residents interested in running for the April 7th, 2026 Ritter Board of Education election will need to file for candidacy at St. Louis County Board of Elections, 725 Northwest Place Drive in St. Anne. The filing period for the April 7th election opens Tuesday, December 9th, and closes 5:00 p.m. on Tuesday, December 30. Three positions will be on the ballot as the three terms of Penny DeGarden, Rob Eaton, and myself, Brad Thomas, expire April 2026. Missouri law requires a person to be a U.S. citizen, at least 24 years old, a resident taxpayer of the district, and to have resided in Missouri for one year immediately preceding the election. The Ritter School Board is hosting a pre-candidate forum information session at 5:00 p.m. on Thursday, December 4th at the Administrative Center, right here, 2420 Woodson Road, for anyone who is considering running for the school board. The session will take place prior to our regular Board of Education work session and provide information and an overview of board service. Those interested in attending the information session should RSVP by contacting our board secretary, Dequinda Woods, and letting her know that they're going to be here. And that concludes the president's report. Next up is our superintendent's report. Dr. Kilbright?
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. So board members, before I get to my... the content of my update, I'd like to recognize somebody who's here with us. I kind of get the sense that she doesn't like attention. So please excuse me. Christina Vo is a senior at Ritter High School. I have the honor of writing a recommendation for Christina for her early decision application to the College of her choice, which is an amazing institution. Had a conversation with Christina. Really sat down with her for the first time a couple weeks back. And board members, she asked for the meeting with me so I could get to know her a little bit better so that I'm able to write a targeted recommendation for her in her... for her college application. Christina is the fourth student that has done that, reached out to me for the purpose of getting... for me to get to know them better so I can write a more targeted letter. That's not happened during my 14-year tenure. Christina was the first person to reach out to me with such a request. And I just want to recognize Christina for her accomplishments, and I won't call them out because I remember them from our conversation. I want to recognize Christina for advocating for herself and knowing where she wants to go. Very proud of you. Thank you for coming tonight. I gave someone solicited advice about a number of colleges. Christina politely said she was not interested in that advice. She knew exactly where she was headed. And just, again, very proud of her for knowing exactly what she wants. Board members, so I'm here to talk about a new opportunity for our middle school students that reflects our district's ongoing commitment to equity, student voice, and community engagement. This month, we'll launch a social justice essay contest. This was the idea and the organization from teacher Tisha McBride, a middle school English language arts teacher. The contest is titled "Justice Starts With Us: Young Voices for Change." All sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade middle school students are encouraged to explore important social justice issues such as racial equity, gender equity, environmental justice, disability rights, and immigration through research, reflection, and making personal connections. This essay contest honors Ms. Lisa Glover Jones, a member of the Ritter Board of Education and a lifelong advocate for education, equity, empowerment, and lifting up student voice. First-place winner will receive a $100 gift. This is a winner from both Ritter Middle and Hake Middle. They will have their essay published on the district website. Second and third-place winners from each of the schools will be invited to come and read their essays to you, board members, on February 12th, 2026. The due date for students to turn in their essays is the 16th of January, and the essays will be judged by a panel of Ritter educators. Contest is open to all middle school students at Hake, Ritter Middle, and the Ritter Center for Educational Excellence. Grateful to Ms. McBride for her leadership and vision in creating this meaningful opportunity and for all in the district who encourage our students to become...
On to our student representative's report.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. I want to start my report on a positive note that I can attest to as a student being in high school. And I just want to say that through the continuous collaborative efforts of administrators and students in the high school, we have successfully decreased the volume of students outside the classroom during instructional periods, which I also just talked about with Dr. Kilbright and Dr. Green. And the implementation of our new digital hall pass system, which I just saw being worked on this week and like being like, did you check your Chromebook? Did you check the system? Allows us to electronically monitor hall traffic and student movement while increased staff patrols ensure a greater level of visibility and supervision. So not only is there that digital aspect, we also have people going around and seeing what's actually going on with their own eyes, which I appreciate. Also, I want to say that in the Ritter School District, we emphasize the three E's of enrollment, enlistment, and employment. While these pathways are recognized across all the grade levels, they are the central focus of students like me, like in our senior year. So this has led to student feedback, such as one student's remark to a staff member, "The high school didn't ask anything of me these past years, and now it's my senior year, and y'all want to know everything." And this really validates the need to make post-secondary planning mandatory. And I want to be able to start that process a little bit earlier. I actually think that it is happening a little bit earlier. I've heard some stuff about the freshman seminars and certain things like that going around the high school. But I want to make sure that, like, everybody isn't feeling so cramped or stressed out their senior year, and we can really, like, make those things start to happen, even if they aren't mandatory. Or, sorry, not mandatory. Even if they aren't final or because they're not required until graduation, but just to start that process so everybody knows what's going on. I also want to say that in my experiences with the system Empower, it has done a great job being a platform for our CBE learning, but it also has made it quite difficult to earn those higher grades. Me and some of my friends, that one over there, are really high achievers whenever it comes to grades and all the work that we produce and put out. But by adopting a system that eliminates certain percentages and numbers, we lose all the extra wins that may come above that 3.0 level. All teachers don't have curriculums and talk with many scales, and some don't offer that extra 4.0 work that we talk about in here. And so you would need... in order to get an A, you would need almost over 100 on each scale, but the work only goes up to 90%. So sometimes I'm like wondering about those students who like to achieve higher because that job just got even more difficult. So kind of starting up a way to work around that or make sure that all classes do have that extra 4.0 work or just a 3.5 would be really beneficial for the ones that want to work harder. Lastly, I just want to say that if you know me, you know I am the drum major, and I've been a marching band for my entire high school career. And the season is almost at its end, and it's just helped me learn so many things about others and myself. But the greatest thing I learned is the importance of community, just like a simple group like this. A strong community provided me a sense of belonging and a support system, knowing you have people to rely on, help me navigate all parts of my life, and expose me to diverse perspectives and ideas I'd never seen before. So when going around schools and talking to other people, I urge them to join clubs and talk to... meet new people and join all the things that you can because community provides safety, and every student deserves to feel like they belong. That will conclude my report.
Thank you very much. Who to think about with the higher-achieving students, right? Okay. Next report is our MSBA... NSBA report. And I'll come to the strong Ms. Glover Jones.
Yes, we could start off with the beginning. That would be great.
Welcome to the November edition of the Missouri School Board's Association's Board Report. We begin with a look at the 2025 MSBA Local Conference in cooperation with Massa and Boazbo. This year's event was once again held in Kansas City. MSBA President Shelley Mantel got the conference off to a great start at the first general session. During her remarks, she stressed the importance of local school board service.
When I was a student, and even though my father was a teacher, I had no idea there was a school board in the background guiding those places of learning. The work of school board often goes unnoticed, but our work is critical to the success of our districts. As leaders in public education, it is our greatest duty to ensure that our districts have the administrative and fiscal strength to provide the best possible education to our students. It is imperative that we advocate for fair and consistent funding for our children, that we represent the people who elected us, and that we take very seriously our fiscal responsibility to our patrons.
During the third session of the conference, Missouri's 2026 Teacher of the Year, Kimberly Sixtill, was recognized. She told the crowd that whether you're a teacher, an administrator, or a board member, everybody has a role to play as a champion for public education and our students.
And that every single student deserves to feel success, every single one. And they deserve to have their potential recognized. So I know when my students leave my class that they most likely won't remember the 27 amendments that I've tried to drill into them to be ready for EOC testing. I mean, there's a hope. But I know that they will remember how I made them feel. And I want that memory to be a good one. I want it to be something that they can hold on to and say, "She believed in me." So to all the school board members out here tonight, I want to say thank you. Thank you for the time you devote to our young people and to the education staff across the state. It doesn't happen without you. Thank you for working diligently to problem-solve educational issues that often feel insurmountable. I know they do. Thank you for taking those late-night phone calls from teachers who need help or the parents who have concerns. And thank you for fighting for Missouri schools and for the value of our educational system. This work doesn't happen without you. It doesn't happen without all of us.
Also during the third session, Suzanne Luther of the Jefferson City School District was presented with the Paul Morris Community Service Award.
But I do want to say I am so honored to be awarded this with this company because I feel that everybody who steps up as a school board member qualifies for this award.
And Seymour R2, Republic R3, and Hazelwood were all awarded MSBA Future Builders Early Childhood Education Program of the Year awards. In addition to the outstanding general sessions, the conference featured more than 80 concurrent sessions on a wide range of topics. Missouri's premier education trade showed the Education Expo, MSBA Student Showcase of Public School Programs, and much more. MSBA's Delegate Assembly also met in conjunction with the Annual Conference to establish the position statements that will guide advocacy work during the coming year. And finally, each year, the Missouri School Boards Association's Future Builders Foundation awards $18,500 in scholarships to students in MSBA's member districts. A winner is selected from each of the 17 MSBA regions, and one overall state winner is selected. Student nomination forms are due by December 18th. Visit the MSBA website for more details. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board of Education. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thank you for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and we'll see you in December for the next MSBA Board Report.
All right, thank you for playing the video. Just to follow up on the delegate assembly that was held, they do have, I know some people were saying they wish they had it set up like it was in the past where you could go in and observe if you are not a delegate. They do actually still have that, it's just a very small area. So for in the future, if someone wants to come in and observe, that's most definitely an option. I did just want to real quick go over the proposals that were presented and approved. So one of the proposals was from the finance section. It reads, "MSBA believes there should be," and what was added was the word "regular and recurring review of Missouri's approach to funding public education and encourages a more simplified and equitable system." The second proposal that was approved, it was up underneath the personnel division, and it was, there's already three other standing items on here, and I'm not going to read those. I know like we all have access to this. But the addition was related to the retirement system. "MSBA supports legislation that makes permanent the waiver of limitation that allows PSRS, which is a public school retirement system, and PERS members to work as substitute teachers after retirement." So they added that language in that proposal there. And then when we look at proposal three, this is up underneath instruction related to pre-kindergarten education and programs. There are already five existing items there, but the sixth one that they added was, "MSBA supports ongoing professional and developmental appropriate early childhood educational training for preschool teachers." There were in addition, three other proposals that were submitted by different boards throughout the state of Missouri. Only one of those was brought to the floor where they were asking us to vote separately on it. And this proposal related to school finance and superintendent payouts. It read, "MSBA supports legislation to limit superintendent payouts upon separation or termination to no more than one year's salary, thereby protecting taxpayers from undue burden." This was presented or submitted by the Columbia Public Schools, and on that day, I believe it was Melville that, and Columbia, that stood up to justify the need for this. But this actual proposal was not approved. So just to keep everybody in a loop in case that comes up again at the summer delegate assembly. So that's it in regards to the delegate assembly. But I also wanted to share Vanessa had reached out to me to let me know that she has reached out to Caitlin Whaley. I may be saying Caitlin's last name wrong, but she's with the Advocacy Government Relations Division for MSBA as well as with Tajah McDonald, who's over the Safety School for MSBA. She contacted them expressing concerns about the fears that many of the students throughout the state of Missouri, throughout the United States are now having regarding the political climate, having officers, military officers in communities, expressing the students' concerns about going to school, about family separation, and wanted to set up a meeting to have more discussion with them around where MSBA stands on this. If they do respond to her, she has asked for support from our board to be a part of that meeting, so more to come if we find out that they are willing to do a meeting so that we can have additional discussion about advocacy positions related to where MSBA stands on all of this.
Absolutely.
Can you go back to Vanessa, or I guess we can all, but asking if we want to partner with any other of our neighboring school districts?
Yeah, yep, I could do that. Probably should probably, probably going to say they're going to respond first.
Yeah.
But most definitely, I think that would be a good idea.
Okay.
And that concludes our report.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Next, next report is from the Special School District, and we turn to Dr. Alvin.
Thank you. Go to the next slide. So Dr. Kilbride and I went to visit Island last week. We had a wonderful time. That's Dr. Amanda Conley. I did take a picture. I'm sure that Mr. Smith can definitely tell if you look at that. That's one of those entrances. I want to say, hey, take a look at that. Because I think it's so cool because to me, I want it to look friendly, happy going in. You don't want it to feel like it's incarceration and rigid. And so I was absolutely thrilled walking into that, just getting to see that new section, and you're able to go in and talk to everybody and sign in. But it looks wonderful. Next slide. In Island Elementary School, we have 86 students that receive special education services, 19 are in self-contained classrooms. Generally, you have a pretty big spectrum of autism. And one of the things I really wanted to focus on was paraprofessionals and what they do and how they contribute. Because I think we see that kind of title, but we really don't understand just how much are paraprofessionals do in the classroom. They're generally mostly in the self-contained classrooms, and they assist students in small group and individual learning activities in addition to the teacher in the classroom. And on the side, I just wanted to kind of take a look. They have their communication playground board. They have these boards all over that are symbols so that they have the no appropriate behavior when they're, and this just happens to be in the cafeteria. So it's before they're going outside to be on the playground. And then you can see that there's some adaptive equipment that's there for the classroom that some of the students are in. But I wanted to kind of go a little bit deeper. Dr. Conley had written me back. And the other thing that we have to consider is that the paraprofessionals are also assisting student personal care needs, which can include everything from toileting, transition, feeding needs. They also help students complete assigned tasks. They supervise assigned students in community areas such as the playground and cafe. They will support also students in crisis. So when students are pushed into a general education setting, the pairs also can help direct student attention to the lesson being provided and assist in re-regulating the child as well. So I just want to kind of reiterate, you know, we have a wonderful team. We have our agenda, we have our principals, our assistant principals. But I really truly, as Andrew knows, is that I want not only our special school district staff and our regular staff for Rittner, I want them to feel like they are a family and a community in themselves and not separate. And so, next slide. That kind of concludes my Island visit, and I'm going to be heading December the 1st for our next governing council meeting. Any questions?
Do they have an agenda set yet, that I mean?
I have not received one yet. But as soon as I can, I can definitely set it to you. That's not a problem. Any other questions? That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you very much. It takes us to our business items, and the first business item we have is personnel recommendations. And for that, we look for Dr. Michael a chance to help us out.
What do you mean, board members? I'm here to present personnel report with items 1 through 18, asking for your consideration and approval, and hoping any questions you may have.
On items 10 and 12, assuming that all things are good there, no concerns if we're making that transition?
No concerns. We ran interview processes, good panel committees from schools, and then follow-up process for second model interviews here with the team here.
On 10 and 12, when I look at the new assignment, I have a line item there, and then it's got underneath it in parentheses, and then it has a school listed. Is that just for our own knowledge? We don't list that because?
It's just for your own knowledge. It's typically just doing.
We just do what the top line is, so, okay. That's what I thought. I just wanted to clarify for myself.
And I just want to point out 13 through 18, congratulations on that shift change. I thought, I think it's important to let everyone know, you know, when educators go and get that continuing education and they move up to their masters, that's something really special. And so that's something that should be really appreciated.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none?
I'd like to make the motion that we accept personnel agenda items number 1 through 18 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions about any of the personnel items? Hearing none, call the Ms. Glover Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Gardner.
Yes.
Ms. Lonest.
Yes.
Dr. Alvin.
Yes.
Mr. Eaton.
Yes.
And we'll go next.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Will be gone. I knew he wasn't going anywhere.
Thank you.
My most favorite topic in the whole wide world is calendar committee.
Absolutely. I have two parents joining me this evening.
Thank you very much for coming out tonight.
Ms. Rowan Gordon, Ms. Spitzman. Also, Ms. Spitzman's a sub for us, has a great tab. And as you may know, Ms. Rowan Gordon is a robust professional at the Rittner High School. They both have multiple, two children in the school district and help represent the parent perspective in our committee. We have a total of five parents. And throughout the meetings, typically have four parents at every, at every committee meeting we have. So, starting. I just wanted to point out that while we do see the connection from the calendar committee, as obscure as it may seem, to the equity statement. And when we're determining the days that our students are in session and trying to maximize the time for their learning is our highest priority of the committee. And really see that as trying to eliminate barriers if we can in making decisions about calendar. Calendar committee process this year, we had meetings once a week through the month of September, so four total meetings, identified areas of interest and explored options for those interests. Surveyed staff, members, family, and Rittner High School students. As part of that process, we processed the data findings from the, from the surveys and discussed that as a group, and then explored options. And really had discussions about what we felt was best for our students. And ultimately, the committee came to consensus. Didn't always agree on everything unanimously, but talked it out and discussed the issues and came to consensus on the recommendation. Calendar options that we explored were the first and last day of school. We don't have a lot of room on the first day of school, but we, we still had conversation about it. The dates for parent-teacher conferences were discussed, winter and fall break dates, and really stayed consistent with spring break aligning to the special school district. So we received their spring break dates in advance. Before we even move forward. Dates for professional development in the district and semester and quarter end dates. Our survey results, we ran a survey from September 12 through the 16th. We had a pretty good response for that time. 600, 763 respondents, 333 were staff members, 319 families, and 112 Rittner High School students. Only 7.42% of the staff and 3.49% of families reported that they were dissatisfied with the current school calendar. So that caused the committee to think we need to be very cautious before we make any major changes. By and large, people are pretty pleased with, with the calendar. 65% of families preferred to keep spring break before or keep conferences, spring conferences before spring break and continue with two evenings and one morning option for parents. We did explore another option and determined we were, we were going to stick with consistency in what the parents preferred. 85% of staff wanted to continue with four teacher workdays before the school starts. 82% of families and 74% of staff members responded that they wanted to continue with fall break at the end of October. 70% of respondents were interested in ending first semester before winter break, and we really did explore that option and determined it was not viable given the demands by the law that dictates when we can start school. And so once we determined that as a committee, we pretty quickly came to consensus to leave our end of first semester currently where it stands, which is after the second week in January. I think that shift to level up at the high school also had an impact on the decision. So our committee recommendation.
The first recommendation is maintain the parent structure of a school calendar with slight modifications, having no conferences on board of education meeting nights, and maintaining, as you said already, the two evenings and one morning option for parents. The other adjustment is for spring conferences 2026 this calendar year, changing it to pre-k to 12 evening conferences on the March 10th and March 11th, and morning conferences on March 13th, and then keeping the fall break at the end of October.
We also decided to maintain the end of the first semester occurring at the end of the second week of January, which provides equivalent number of days each semester, and it also provides equivalent time for teacher lesson planning and student mastery of content. There was the elimination of the RHS half-days for final exams, which have been to account, which the level up effort replaces the finals, and then we adjust the current calendar to reflect that change.
So in summary, we are requesting the board, and our recommendation is to approve the 26, 27 school year calendar, 27, 28 school year calendar, 28, 29 school year calendars as presented, and also approve changes to the current school year as we just discussed. And that would mean changing our spring conferences on the, to the evenings of March 10th and 11th, and in the morning of March 13th. This would allow us to avoid the Thursday of the board meeting for conferences, and also removal, formally removal of the half-days for exams as they, that actually began last year with that level up effort. We wanted to make the current calendar reflect those changes. Broken questions you may have, or any comments you may have.
So removing the half-days means that students at the high school would be there four days.
Correct.
And that might lead into my question, because I was looking at the start for the 25, 26 school year as on the 18, but everything subsequently after that starts a week later.
So that happens to be, so one, one of the things that we found is a major driver of the start of the school year is the placement of Labor Day, the Labor Day. So when the Labor Day is later, we can, we start later. Labor Day is earlier in the month, like this year on the 1st of September.
So that's how I threw it off.
Yeah.
I was just double checking, I was like, work the extra day?
The law is the earliest week in start our school year is two weeks prior to Labor Day. So that kind of drives almost the whole calendar.
From that starting point, okay.
Any questions?
We used to start the previous week, three days.
Yes.
Any other questions? Reagan, how we doing down there?
I'm doing good. I like the jeans.
All right. Thank you for all your work. Really appreciate how the calendar committee has come together and looked at everything. Mike, you've done phenomenal work with this.
I want to thank them. They were, they were with the process throughout. They really spoke up and really took over parts of the committee and helped make the decision.
So ladies, thank you for taking your time and helping us out and plan our future. And with that.
Looking for one proposal or two?
Because there's two recommendations.
Two recommendations. The first one will be what he has up there, the approval of the three calendar years. And then the second one will be for the changes of 25, 26.
I move to approve 2026, 2027, 2027, 2028, and then 28, 29 school year calendars as presented.
Second.
And then a second. Ms. Lonest?
Yes.
Dr. Alvin?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Ms. Glover Jones?
Yes.
And I shall move yes. One down, one to go.
I move to approve changes to the 25, 26 school year calendar as presented.
Second.
And then a second. Any thoughts or questions about this year's calendar? Hearing none, call the Ms. Glover Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Dr. Allen.
Yes.
Ms. Lohnes.
Yes.
Uh, yes. Again, thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys, thank you.
Next time we're up here, we'll be talking about 2030 and beyond.
Hey, I'm still impressed that I'm around for 2000s, really. Moving on then, to Dr. Kilbright and policy approvals. And this is the second reading of approval policy KB.
Yes, sir. So board member, second reading approval draft policy KB. This is a policy that we did not have on the books that, based on the MSBA Policy Service, did the first reading at work session. KB, superintendent, board president, or designee, designee is either Doug Gray or Michelle Mueller, will serve as official spokespersons for the district. Employees and board members will direct public or media requests for official statements about district business to the district spokespersons. Board members should emphasize that they may speak only as individual board members and not for the entire board. We have a written communication plans, a plan that outlines multiple methods of two-way reliable communication with all stakeholders. This will be a yearly plan that is presented to the Board of Education. I met with Doug during our weekly meeting this week. We're looking for a November presentation, a November yearly presentation of the communications plan for your consideration and approval. Regarding effective communications, when interacting with the public, all district employees and board members are responsible for communicating accurate information about district policy and program, as well as promoting effective partnership. That is policy KB, second reading and looking for your approval.
Are there any questions on the policy? And we have a motion.
I'd like to make a motion.
Thank you, I just lost it too.
I know, I just lost it.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt policy KB as presented.
There you go.
Got it.
Second.
Nailed it. All right, are there any questions on this policy before we vote? This is a new policy, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Hearing none, call vote. Mr. Gardner.
Yes.
Ms. Glover Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Eaton.
Yes.
Ms. Lohnes.
Yes.
Ms., Dr. Allen.
Yes.
And I shall vote yes. Your policy down. Second policy.
Board member, second reading and looking for approval of GB-CBB. This has to do also with staff communication that is protected. The district will not take action against district employees solely for speech that is protected by state or federal law in talking in generalities, that is speech that is a matter of public concern. The district encourages district employees to be mindful of the impact of their communication and the impact that communication may have on the school district community. We expect employees to take responsibility for their own communications, regardless of whether that communication occurs while on the job or off. District employees are prohibited from representing their opinions as those of the district and are required to clarify when they are speaking as an individual and not as a representative of the district. All communications made by an employee while working for or representing the district must be professional. Regarding protected communications, administrators or supervisors will not prohibit an employee from discussing the operations of the district. Additional information there. Neither the district nor its administrators and supervisors will prohibit a district employee from or take disciplinary action against an employee for disclosing an alleged prohibited activity. Regarding leaving work areas, district employees are required to follow all applicable rules and supervisor instructions regarding attendance. An employee may not leave the assigned work areas during normal work hours to discuss district operations or to make protected disclosures under this policy. Regarding unprotected communications, a district employee may be disciplined for communicating information if the employee knew the information was false. GB-CBB, the why for MSBA in pushing this out now, due to the level of division, there has been the perception nationwide perhaps of muzzling. That is not the attempt, but rather, this policy calls out the expectation of truthful, purposeful communication amongst employees and reinforcing the fact that we've got boundaries on district action against the boards.
Okay.
All right. Make motion to adopt policy GB-CBB as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Are there any questions or thoughts on this policy? Hearing none, call vote. Mr. Eaton.
Yes.
Dr. Allen.
Yes.
Ms. Lohnes.
Yes.
Ms. Glover Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Gardner.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Thank you, sir. Moving on. SRO agreements. Mr. Michael Smith, Director of Operations.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Hi. How's everybody doing?
Wonderful.
Good. So as you know, we have very strong relationships with all of our local police departments. Two of our local police departments provide school resource officers in four of our schools. St. Anne provides four school resource officers for a cost of $244,000 to the district. Breckenridge Hills provides one school resource officer at no cost. That's due to a grant that was initiated by Breckenridge Hills. The agreements that we have in place are in line with our mission, vision, and especially our equity statement. Therefore, I'm recommending that the Board of Education approve the continuation of the St. Anne and Breckenridge Hills SRO agreements through the 25, 26 school year, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
As we covered in our work session, the Breckenridge Hills SRO is covered by a grant, thus no costs goes.
That is correct.
That is good. And he's at the.
He's at Husky Academy.
All right, I'll make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve the St. Anne and Breckenridge Hills School Resource Officer agreements as presented. Second.
Motion and a second. Are there any questions or thoughts? Hearing none, call vote. Ms. Lohnes.
Yes.
Dr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Eaton.
Yes.
Mr. Gardner.
Yes.
Ms. Glover Jones.
Yes.
I'll vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And since you're here.
Yes.
Let's talk about Shafitz Arena Agreement.
Happy to do so. So, you know, excited that our seniors are going to be graduating on May 30th, 2026. Traditionally, graduation has had a start time of 6:00 PM. And tonight I'll be requesting that the start time of graduation be changed to 4:00 PM, beginning in 2026, and that will allow families to be home before dark. Furthermore, as you know, last year the Board of Education approved extending our contract with Shafitz for the class of 2027. That date is Saturday, June 5th, 2027. And in order to reserve the venue for the 2028 graduation ceremonies, I'm requesting that the Board of Education allow us to hold the date of Saturday, June 3rd, 2028. The Saturday immediately following Memorial Day. I'm also recommending that the graduation ceremonies begin at 4:00 PM moving forward.
I think that's a fantastic idea, because I know even with the band, and trying to get those instruments when it's already dark outside, the choir, she could like have some music back, so that's a fantastic idea.
Penny made that suggestion last year, and, you know, it came up in conversations and it was very popular.
So to be clear, the next graduation we come to.
Will be at 4:00, if approved tonight.
There's two parts to this. We're asking, because we already have two years' worth, as Mike has shared, two years' worth approved. We're asking for 2028. And then we're also asking to change the time to 4:00 PM starting this year.
I'll make motion to approve the Shafitz Arena graduation agreement for the Bridger graduation on June 3rd, 2028, with a start time of 4:00 PM, moving forward as presented.
Second.
Any questions or thoughts?
Is it just me, or is that, I get it, but is that, that motion is confusing to me. I'm looking at that and reading Bridger graduation on June 3rd, 2028, with a start time of 4:00 PM, moving forward. I kind of read that as we're saying from 28 on.
So you.
That's, that's what I look at.
Okay, I'm just thinking, I'm reading crazy.
That's, so do we need a second motion to?
So instead of, if moving forward is unclear, which it sounds like it is, could be two motions. We're asking for 2028, and we're also asking to change from 6:00 to 4:00, starting this year.
Let's vote, let's vote on this one and then.
Right.
Okay.
We'll vote on the future, 2028, and we'll step back to. Okay?
26 is future.
No, we already got that kind of in the contract.
So Penny made a motion, you could ask Penny to amend her motion?
Okay.
Want to amend your motion?
I will amend the motion for the 26, 25, 26 year graduation and the 26, 27 year of graduation to be changed from a 6:00 PM start time to 4:00 PM.
Okay? Second.
Good? Everybody know what we're doing?
Christopher Lee, we're good. We just want to make sure all the, everybody's there at 4:00.
Yeah, don't show up at 6:00 waiting for the graduation.
The invitation also raised 4:00.
Yes. We're changing a lot of times here, Mike. We changed the board meeting, now we're changing graduation. All right. Let's call the vote. Mr. Gardner.
Yes.
Ms. Lohnes.
Yes.
Dr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Eaton.
Yes.
Ms. Glover Jones.
Yes.
Reagan, we okay with this?
With graduation being at?
Four.
At four? Personally, as somebody who is graduating and not you guys, I think that it's a little early. Like, I feel like we make stuff start later so that the people who have to work in the morning, because like, the workday doesn't stop. Like, people work every single day of the week, so that they have a little more time to get down there. Like, even on a regular day, my dad gets off work at 6:30. And I feel like it just gives people more time to get ready, get acclimated. And even for those people like who have to make speeches, like my sister, she did the commencement speech. She came about three hours early last year, and they have to run through everything. So that just moves everything up, and it gives everybody less time. And so I'm not exactly sure if it's fair to everyone else, just because some people like don't want to drive at night. But, because like, we can work around things like that, but, I mean, if there's nothing I can do about it, it's all right. It'll be so much easier, that's for sure.
So there's another piece to this also, board members. There was conversation with Shafitz Arena Leadership. Mike, would you care to share that?
Yes, they shared with us that there were a few incidents last year. And they also requested that we have an earlier start time. They felt that, you know, a lot of people overindulged before the 6:00 time, and they felt that moving into a 4:00 time might reduce that a little bit. Also, you know, they're, you know, a little bit of routing us out in the concourse area. And so, you know, as we talked through this, you know, with the 4:00 start, we made that suggestion to them if that would help with those matters, and they were very positive about that.
So St. Louis University is working to move all graduations up. There will be no graduation with a 6:00 PM or later start time for any district that they serve.
And the reason that I had brought it up originally is that that's one comment that I heard from so many parents after graduation, was that it ran, it runs late, and the more students you have, the later it runs. And there were so many people that had to cancel, like dinner reservations, because there was no time to go. They had to call and cancel. And a lot of people evidently planned family things at least for following graduation, and they weren't able to do what they were planning on doing, so.
I would say two years ago, we ended up stopping at Jack in the Box on the way home, because there was nowhere to go and to get to eat for, so our graduation dinner was Jack in the Box. So I, moving to 4:00 allows you to go eat after, have some, a family party or something.
And time for pictures.
All good reasons.
And to.
I shall vote yes.
Did you vote as well?
To Reagan's point, the original request was to move it to the morning. And we understood, we understood why that's not acceptable. Mike and I had many conversations. And so.
No, we're okay.
9:00 AM, that'd be good.
Francis Howe has 8:00 AM.
Yep.
They have a 8:00 AM, a 12:00, and then a 4:00.
Yes.
So does Parkway and.
Hazelwood.
Hazelwood.
Does too. I don't know what time their earliest is. Do you know what time their earliest is? At 10:00.
They break it up a little bit.
No, so Francis Howe has three high schools, and so they rotate. So one year you're the first, this next year you're the second, and the third year you're the third, and then you go back to the first.
Okay. We have, we have an amended motion.
Wait.
And his motion is.
Oh, yes, sorry.
We've got an amended motion.
Second.
We have a second. So you're ready? I'm glad we don't have four high schools. Ms. Glover Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Gardner.
Yes.
Ms. Lohnes.
Yes.
Dr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Eaton.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes.
Thank you.
For all those reasons, then. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Sorry for the confusion.
It's just a state that I'm in most of the time.
We voted to amend it, and then we voted to.
You voted for 4:00.
I thought the amended had to.
It has the date in.
Yep.
Yeah, like I said, the school, the school year. In the next two years. It's, we're changing it.
That was the amended.
6:00 PM to 4:00 PM, yeah, that was it.
It's not right until Betty has it right.
I understood that your motion was 4:00 for 2026. And 27.
The nice second one. Said 25, 26.
25, 26. It's 27. That that change would be from 6:00 PM start to 4:00 PM. So there's only one vote?
Yes.
So to be clear, the motion did not include 2028? Because it's already approved 26, 27. The goal also is to tack on 28, because we always have a three-year rolling cycle. Did that, was that unincluded in Penny's motion?
Well, that, my original, I just read what was up there, which was a little confusing, because it looked like it was only for 2028.
So when she amended, it was amended to add the other years, 24. It's a whole calendar.
We're good.
Okay. You okay, Betty? All right, then we're good.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. 3.07 is board member comments. Does any board member have any comments for the video? of the school district and the community?
So I would like to let everybody know that we have our 'Twas the Night Before Christmas date. That will be set for Sunday, December 14th, at 5:00 p.m. When we'll be putting the bags together for our students. It'll be at New Horizons, down the street from here, in the back entryway. Same place we do it every year. I am looking for donations of toys. I know that they are a little bit more expensive this year, so anything we would appreciate. It is serving kindergarteners through fifth graders. And also, if you don't want to go shopping, you can do monetary donations. They will be accepted, and those will be donated to the Rittner Pride and Promise with a notation in the, that the donation is used for 'Twas the Night Before Christmas. And those donations will be used to purchase hats, gloves, and books, and we make a little bag of snacks that we put into the gifts also.
Anybody else?
I do want to say thank you to Dr. Stewart, Dr. Gilliam, and Dr. Nobill, and Dr. Kilbright. Couple years ago, we, as a board, were talking about conferences and things of that nature. And we had made the determination that, you know, for conferences, that we felt that we could present on the different things that are going on in our school district, that we would do that. Because in many ways, Rittner is taking the lead and doing things innovative compared to other districts throughout the state of Missouri and even throughout the United States. So appreciate them hearing that request and working with us as the board. A lot of times, they'll go in and do the presentations, and then we get to come in and be like, oh, we think you should change this, you should add this. And so appreciate that flexibility and willing to work with us and support the board with that initiative to get out there and spread the great things that are happening in our district.
I will say, they make us look good.
Couple things to note as we go into the holiday season, as Jennifer pointed out, and she's already ramping up her, her things. Things from our news. One in seven of our people get assistance with food, you know, with the food stamps, EBT, whatever you want to call it. Think about them. Our food pantry is, even though it's thriving and they made, I mean, a lot of money at the trivia night and such, I'm sure they could double that and still worry about if they have enough food during this holiday season. Didn't you say we're gonna, they're gonna have another, a new chairman? Does any of the, the board?
Uh, there's a new, yeah, the new board chair is coming forward. This is public information. Is that correct, Phil? The incoming board chair of the food pantry?
Don't have to share, don't have to share the name.
I can't say the conferences.
But they, they are moving in a great direction. Okay, so any, any help of time, material, whatnot, for, for the food pantry would be great. I just think about people that aren't as, as fortunate as we are in this time. So just keep those, keep people in mind. We're, we're in the business of people. Keep them in mind. Lisa, I thanked you before, but I know families that are using your services from your mobile service friends or things. They are very much appreciated. And with that, we'll turn to our Consent Agenda items, 4.01 to 4.09.
I move to approve Consent Agenda items 4.01 through 4.09 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on our Consent Agenda items. Is there any thoughts, questions, or comments about those?
I do have some comments for our summer school, just looking at that, the area of concerns. I just, as we get prepared come springtime, if we could circle back to those, because I feel like there are some things that we could, as I consider low-hanging fruit, that should not necessarily be an issue for next summer, summer school. Key things that pulled out proficiency scale focus, that came up for that, and then we also heard that tonight from our student rep. So keeping that in mind. And then counseling support over the summer. I know we have resources in our district where that necessarily should not be an issue. Also want to thank the individuals who got together to account, the accountability and instructional report. I love the detail and data.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Call the vote. Dr. Alvin?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Ms. Lons?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Ms. Glover Jones?
Yes.
And I shall vote yes. Consent agenda items are now approved, and we need a motion then to go into closed session.
I'd like to make a motion to reconvene in closed session for State Statute 610021 for a discussion of legal and personnel agenda items.
Second.
Call the vote. Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Dr. Alvin?
Yes.
Ms. Lons?
Yes.
Ms. Glover Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Let's take five minutes, come back, and we'll go into closed session.